Okay, I open, I welcome you all to our second virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. This meeting may be recorded and your image may be captured, so I'm warning you. And I'm gonna, all our votes tonight will be by roll call. I'm just going to mention names and see who's here. Of course, I'm Lynn Ryan. And we have Leanne Leahy.
Here.
As our clerk. And Keith?
Here.
And Sue?
Here.
And Jenny?
Here.
And Pat?
Yep, here.
And Jim?
Here.
And Denny?
Here.
We have Amy?
Here.
And we have, is it attorney Paul Haverty?
Yes. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. I wasn't sure. Good evening.
Good evening. Do we want to promote Seth so he can speak to as an attorney?
Okay, well, I'm going to open the hearing for the Capes of Berlin. But the first discussion I'd like to have, I've asked Amy to talk to us about the provisions of, what is it, chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020?
Correct.
So could you explain to the board what that act does?
Sure. Did you, did you want to open the meeting, or, I mean, open the hearing, or do, have me do that before?
Okay, well, then if it, I thought I already had, but if I haven't done opening the hearing.
Oh, you opened the meeting. So, so no, you're right. You opened the meeting. So, back on April 2nd or April 3rd, the legislature passed the chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, which is known as the Municipal Relief Act. And so that legislation allows land use boards to defer acting on permits. And so if you have, there's a definition of permit, which a comprehensive permit clearly fits in as a definition of a permit. So if you are contemplating a permit, if you have a pending hearing on that permit, you can continue that to a date which would be after the termination of the state of emergency, but it has to be within 45 days of the termination of the state of emergency. So, right now, we are operating on the earliest that the state of emergency can be terminated would be May 18th, and therefore, a hearing should be held in sometime in June, before July 2nd. July 2nd is 45 days from May 18th. The reason for the Acts, the reason for the chap, for chapter 53, which I will refer to as the Act, the reason is because land use boards have, it's a, it's a little bit different, it's a different scenario with land use boards as to other boards, because you guys have to review plans. You have to, every hearing, for example, the zoning board of appeals, your hearings are all public hearings, which means you have to allow the public access and they can ask questions. And, you know, you're flipping from document to document, which, which is difficult. It's difficult on, on Zoom. It's difficult on any virtual platform. So, so that would be the, you know, that's the, that's pretty much the impetus for this, for this act. And there's a few things with the act. The act has a provision where when an application comes in, the town can simply defer action on it until after the termination of the state of emergency, meaning they don't even have to open the hearing. So if, for example, a comprehensive permit came in and the board did not act within 30 days, you would not be, you would not be subject to a constructive approval argument because of the act. And then with pending hearings, pending hearings is, is a bit different. Pending hearings, the section of, section 17 of the act states that pending hearings shall be told and continued. When we're looking at statutes and acts, there's a difference between shall and may. Shall is usually mandatory. May gives you guys a little bit more discretion. I will tell you that KP Law has taken the position that the decision to continue hearings or go forward on hearings is in the sole discretion of the board. So, you know, it's in your sole discretion whether you want to go forward or whether you want to continue. Another provision of the act is that it allows the chairman or the chairperson to continue hearings without a quorum. And so, so that again is, is going to the reason of the act. And the reason of the act is so boards don't have to meet, whether, whether it be virtually or in person. So, you know, so Lynn and Leanne and myself could go, you know, we could go to the next meeting and Lynn can simply just continue everything to, to the next date. If, if the state of emergency hasn't been lifted by, you know, your June date, Lynn can just show up and, and do that. And then there, you know, there's a couple of things afterwards. We have to notify applicants. We have to put it on the website, things like that. But, so, so that's where we stand right now. This hearing is clearly falls squarely within the act because it was pending as of March 10th, which is the, kind of the important date. And therefore, you know, this board has to decide whether you want to continue this hearing virtually or if you want to simply take no testimony tonight and continue it to a date in June, which again, could be continued if, if the state of emergency does not lift on March 8th or May 18th. It could be continued again. But, but to be safe. So, so what happened, what happens if, if we don't continue hearings that are pending, in my opinion, the hearing, if, once, once the state of emergency ends and that we have 45 days to hold a hearing, the applicant has to renotice and republish. So, so I'm kind of advising that if you have pending hearings and if you have the possibility to continue them, you know, we should.
Okay, folks, I, don't do things unilaterally. I'd like to know how you feel about it. So does anyone wish to express their feeling on how we should proceed?
If I can say something, Lynn, just the fact that I have no access to any of the documents and I would like to continue it to a later date, just for the fact I can't see anything. Sorry.
Thank you, Pat. Is there anyone else that would like to express their opinion?
I believe we should postpone it.
Okay, Denny's seems to be a, I'm gonna do a consensus vote after you have a chance. But if there's anything you'd like to say to influence myself or others, please do so.
I know there was a, a letter sent from Mr. Minnick. And as of yet, I have had no time to run down there to see if any more material was excavated out of the site or not.
I went by today and checked the site out. And I was very surprised at how much material has been removed.
Could I just make, or interject here?
Yep.
Right now, I'd like not to discuss any merits of the petition that's before us. I'd like to discuss whether or not we feel it should be continued. Because if we're gonna make a discussion of what's going on, then I think we're holding a hearing. Anyone else like to come in pro a con to, while I'll go around? Jenny, I heard from you. Sue, how do you feel?
Um, I think it's in the best interest of everyone if it's continued. But how do we address the issues that are ongoing? Because although we're continuing the hearing, there is work that is going on on the site.
If you wish, under correspondence later on, I can tell you about Mr. Munich's letter, Minnick, whatever we, I always mispronounce his name and always will, but I think that's a separate issue. Jenny, how do you feel? As she takes a mouthful of coffee.
Um. I'm undecided right now. Could I listen to what others, how others feel before I make a decision?
Okay. Keith, do you have an opinion?
I really don't. I can go either way on this. You know, I'm not sure that June, we're gonna be in any different position than we are now. So I think at some point, we're gonna have to probably figure out how to do this virtually. But if we want to wait another month and see if things change.
Well, it can be continued until the state of emergency is lifted. Let's see. We heard from Jenny. We haven't heard from Jim.
I'm kind of torn on this. I do have a question for Amy. If we're continuing all of this, should we choose to do that? The applicant currently has a process ongoing with the state, with the, the housing folks and whatever. Is all of his side of that also told? Is it, is, is his tolling stopped?
Yes, yes.
Cause I'm, I'm just a little concerned. Okay, cause I'm just a little concerned here that we're, you know, we'd be dragging this out at least another month. Obviously, the applicant would like to get an answer on this. I'd like to eventually draw this to a close and give him an answer. So I'm, I'm kind of torn on it myself.
I do, I do also, and, and again, you know, I am your counsel, so I am not taking a position on this either way. I'm just laying out all the facts for you. And one of the facts that I think is important is that under the 40B, under the regulations, under 760 CMR 56, you have 180 days to act on an application once you open it without any tolling. So if you put aside what, everything I've said already, without any tolling, your 180 days is up in August. So.
Very early in August.
Or I think it's like August 3rd. However, the, you know, the Municipal Relief Act tolls that time. But, you know, I'm just putting it out there that even if we didn't have that, we have until August.
Okay. Just myself, I'm concerned. We have had, and I've had a couple of verbal complaints, but we have one written complaint about the lack of participation. I will say, it was noted that by folks that only one person attended the last hearing. So my concern is lack of access of others. You know, even the petitioner has been kind enough to validate what prints and so forth we have available. But there's really no way for us to have them really look at those prints. And especially with Pat or any of the rest of us that may have technical difficulty. And we did have technical difficulty with the recording last time around. I'm concerned. And I look and see, I don't, is Mr. Rhodes with you, uh, Mr. Harvey, Haverty?
He's not with me. I presume he's on the call in some form.
He is not. Unless he's with Seth.
Seth, can you hear, is Seth muted?
Seth has raised his hand. Lynn, do you want me to promote him to panelists?
Please.
Okay.
It is possible he's with Michelle St. Michael.
Okay. Do you want me to promote her as well, or unmute her?
Well, isn't she the real estate agent for Rhodes?
Well, I just wondered who was here. I'm not, I think this issue is a board issue as to what we want to do.
Right.
And I'm hearing that Pat and Denny, myself, there's some people that are torn. I think if you're in doubt, that should tell you something, that, you know, you have reservations about continuing with a virtual meeting maybe. Again. I know.
I do feel like, I agree with you, Lynn, too, for the access for the public. I haven't seen a lot of the people that are usually there. They didn't get online last time. And these are people who have come to every single meeting. So.
Madam Chair and Leanne, so Mr. Haverty and Mr. Donahue, they, they cannot be seen. Is that, is that on their end?
Um, I believe it's on their end, but let me see.
Okay, because, okay. Thanks, Seth. Cause I mean, if they were both on the phone, then we couldn't even look at plans anyway. So.
I don't know if it was addressed, but Michelle St. Michael is, is Mark Rhodes tonight. He's logged in on that computer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, I was more concerned about seeing Seth than you, but it's nice to see you.
It's nice to see you too, as well. I don't like, I don't like these Zoom calls, cause I don't have, I don't like having to look at myself.
Ah.
So it appears that, it appears that, you know, you, you do have the applicants. It's, the concern is more, I, I was more concerned about a procedural defect, meaning the applicants would not have the opportunity to present.
I'm concerned.
But that's not a concern. I think the abutter concern is what the board needs to discuss.
Well, I saw a note today. I don't know, Leanne, if you know what the situation is. We don't, no longer have the chat feature.
Right, right. There's no longer a chat feature. It was disabled per town administrator.
Really?
Yeah, for all the boards. It's just, it's not available to any of the boards through the town Zoom account.
Wow, okay. Um, so those that were on the fence.
That, that actually, that's an open meeting law recommendation that the chat function not be available. So there can, so there can't be any allegations of the board deliberating in the chat or.
Right.
Which your board would, would never do, but that's why, just so you know.
I'm concerned about the technicalities. I'm concerned about the lack of participation. I think that things may start to open up and we may be finding that we could do this efficiently at a later date. I'll go back to Jenny. Have we changed your mind at all or made your mind up?
Yes, I, I would lean toward postponing.
Okay. And Keith? Okay, we'll go to Jim.
I, I'm still on the fence. I personally would like to tie this up, but I do understand the concerns. I, obviously, you know, we want to get everybody, all the abutters and folks from the town who want to say something. We definitely want to get their input, but I don't, I don't want to drag this out for another six months either.
I don't think any of us do. I'll be quite honest with you. I think we'd like to put it to bed.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to let you know, I got a text message from Mr. Rhodes. And he said that he is logged in under Michelle St. Michael. So if you had any questions for him and you wanted to promote him or unmute him.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Thank you. Just looking for my mouse here from my other computer. There's some verbiage here. So let's see how this goes. I'm taking it, we have at least myself, Pat, Denny, and Jenny as regular board members. And even the other one board member is, still appears to be torn. So my suggestion would be that we continue this. I have some verbiage here that perhaps I'll read, but we can do it one of two ways. I would prefer not to cause the petitioner to have to repost and the meeting. We can do it indefinitely or until the, you know, 45 days after the ending of the state of emergency. But my suggestion would be we go month to month unless someone objects to that. Amy, were you gonna?
Seth, I would be.
So Lynn, do you have a date for June?
June 10th would be our regularly monthly meeting.
June 10th.
Did you want to, did you want to continue it to June 10th?
Yeah, so I would say, in accordance with chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, section 17, the hearing on the pending application for comprehensive permit will be automatically told and continued to the first hearing date of the board following the termination of the state of emergency, which we expect to be May 18th.
No, June 10th.
All right, so I'm sorry, June 10th. If the state of emergency has not been terminated by June 10th, the hearing will be continued again. Is everybody in line with that?
Yes.
I am.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I don't want to lose the, the next month and not make any progress. So since the last meeting, we did submit a number of items to the board. And I just wanted to request the ability to actually converse with Attorney Questle to see if there's any additional information that the board may want to see based upon what we had submitted to you, just to make sure that anything that you want from us is in front of you when we actually do have.
I have, I have no objection, and I don't think anyone on the board would have objection for you and our attorney getting together to see. I know I had some questions that I didn't find were answered in the submissions. So perhaps some work can be done between the two of you if you choose.
Okay, I mean, for instance, we did submit, you know, draft homeowners association documents. And if there's information.
So Paul, I have, I have comments on that, so I can, I can definitely, definitely give you my comments on, on the HOA documents. Unfortunately, the board can't, you know, as a board, you know, I can't, they can't tell me what's missing because it's, they have to do that in a public hearing. But, um, but I think once we go through my comments, I think we'll address a few things.
Great. Thank you very much.
Six feet apart.
Now, I just asked folks, you have no objection.
On the phone.
The two attorneys conversing to see if they can move some stuff and make some productive time.
No objection.
Done here.
None here.
Good.
Okay, if not, then would it be appropriate for us to continue the hearing until June 10th? Is that what we would need to take a vote on?
Yes.
Yeah, Amy says yes.
Yep.
So I'll entertain a motion in accordance with chapter 53 of the.
So you, you already made your motion. The only thing that I just wanted to add to your motion is that your motion will be June 10th, 2020, at Town Hall unless the meeting shall be held virtually, which will be posted on the website and the agenda. You can just say so moved.
I'm so glad you're here. Okay, we'll do.
So you can say so moved, and then you need a second.
Yeah. I've, okay, so is someone, I let someone else move it if they would.
Okay.
I'll second.
Who has moved it, Denny?
Yeah.
Okay. And who seconded?
Pat.
Oh, sorry, Jenny.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Nope.
If not, I'll take a roll call. Let's see, let's start with Denny.
Yes.
Jim?
No.
Uh. Jenny?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay, so I would say that is a four to one vote? And it was Jim that was a nay. We all set with that, Leanne?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys. We have some, I mean, you're welcome to stay. We have some housekeeping to do.
Appreciate that, but I think I'll go eat dinner instead. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I just want to bring your attention that there are still two people with their hands raised in attendance. Do we want to recognize them, or, I just want to make sure you.
Absolutely. Who's got their hand raised?
Dennis and, and Michelle.
Which is really.
Mark.
Mark Rhodes.
And Mr. Rhodes.
Hello?
No, do, do you want to let them speak, Lynn? That's the question.
As far as I'm concerned, we've continued the hearing, but he's welcome to speak at the meeting if he wishes.
Okay, so you want me to unmute Mr. Minnick?
If he has his hand raised, sure.
Okay.
Hi, thank you. I, I had just requested that you read my letter, but I guess you didn't choose to do that at, at the meeting.
It is, excuse me just for a second. It isn't that we didn't choose to read it. It is that we did not conduct any business under the hearing. And we can't if we were going to invoke the chapter 53.
Okay, I just didn't understand it, but thank you.
Is that right, Amy? I mean, I'm making statements that.
Yes, no, again, if you take testimony, then this is a hearing and we lose quorum, we have quorum issues, et cetera. So no, you did the correct thing, Madam Chair.
Okay, was there anyone else with their hand raised, Leanne?
Mr. Rhodes.
Sure, if Mr. Rhodes wished to speak to us.
He should be able to speak.
He's muted.
All right, unmute. He should be all set now.
I'm all set with what went down. We'll see when the dust settles. And I'm glad that you're able to allow the attorneys to communicate between themselves, to allow progress to move forward on items that are meant to be dealt with between attorneys.
We thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you would like to say to us?
We're not in a formal meeting, so there's nothing that I can.
Oh dear, that, that's scary.
Can I see anyone?
Good night. Thanks for your time.
Okay, and thank you.
Good night.
Okay, is there anything else we, let's see, what's on the agenda? I don't have a copy of the.
The next thing on the agenda is forthcoming petitions for permits that should come before the board, but I think Amy already answered that in the beginning.
Well, I, I'd just like to tell the board that we did have, or we do have a potential for an appeal of the building inspector's decision that may come forward. And Amy, maybe you can tell the folks, if it comes forward, we need to deal with it, right?
You do, yes, unfortunately. And so the legislation that was drafted, or that was enacted, I should say. So the legislation defines permit as a permit variance, special permit, license, amendment, extension, or other approval issued by a permit granting authority. So the appeal of a, of a building inspector or building. So the appeal of a, of a building inspector or building commissioner's determination is none of those. We can't even, we can't even fit it into other approval because the board could agree with the building inspector, which means it's not approved. So it's, it's a, it's a very contentious. There's, well, there's a lot of debate, I should say, amongst land use attorneys whether, you know, this fits in or not, and so we are taking the conservative approach that it does not fit in, and therefore it would need to be acted on within the time limits of the statute. So under 40A sections eight and 15, which is they govern the appeals of building commissioners, the board would have to hold a hearing within 65 days and then would have to make a decision within 100 days. The 65 days, there's case law that says that's directory, not mandatory, so. But if we, you know, i- if the board can, this, this might be one, you know, one of the hearings that we have no choice, we have to hold virtually if, if, if we can't do anything else, so.
Is there something pending other than Mark's project?
Well, I know that there is a cease and desist order that may come before us. No one has as yet filed, but has expressed an intention to file and is seeking assessor's records. So I would expect that they're probably going to come forward. Now, these same people may be applying for multiple things, but the only thing we will, I would expect, deal with would be the building inspector's decision or determination, or however we word it.
So as of now, nothing has come forward to this board?
Nothing else. Nothing else, but I tend to expect this one well. And unless I hear objection to it, I think I'm going to do a writing with the help of Amy and give it to the town clerk that she can hand out with anyone requesting a permit saying that we're automatically invoking chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020. Does that seem reasonable, Amy?
Yes, and, and again, the, the way that the act is written does not even require, you know, notice to the applicant, but, but we, we, you know, our law firm sent out e updates and we do have suggested language that the town clerk could just send, or, you know, or Leanne could send to an applicant. Just to say, yeah, we'll be in touch once the state of emergency is over. So the reason for the 45 days after the termination of the state of emergency is so all of these public hearings can be properly noticed under 40A section 11, and, and you have time to hold a hearing.
Do I hear any objection on the part of any members of the board to me doing this and giving this to the town clerk after Amy gives me the verbiage?
Doesn't look like a good idea.
Oh, even Jim, you're, you're in favor too?
Sure, I'll go along with that one.
Oh, he's fickle. Okay, so that's about, and again, there's nothing else that I'm aware of, but there may be some permits to go along with this. I don't know. I contacted the town clerk this morning to see if there's anything else coming forward, and that was the only thing she mentioned that someone had been hovering.
And also, Lynn, I did receive a phone call about the process, someone looking, who's going to be looking to file for a special permit for an in-law apartment. Now, whether they actually do, I don't know. But that's what has to be told.
Okay, so I think, you know, Amy will give me the verbiage. I'll have the town clerk give it to them, and I'll also ask the town clerk to notify us of what's hanging out there. So that, and Amy, you will let us know, I mean, I don't know, when is the state of emergency open?
Oh, well, like I said, the earliest it could possibly end is May 18th, so before it was May, what was it, May 4th, I think? So we'll know more, we will know more next week.
But even if they partially open, that doesn't mean they have lifted the state of emergency.
No, it doesn't, and, and the, the act specifically states termination of the state of emergency, so.
They may not be one and the same.
No, a, a rolling open and the state of emergency would not, and termination of state emergency would not be the same, no.
And I will ask you that you will notify the zoning board of appeals when that happens.
Yes, as soon as I escape from my house, I will, yes.
Oh, you're getting so much time to spend with family.
So fun.
Are you playing educator?
Oh, it's so fun, so fun. I don't understand fourth grade math, by the way. But actually, you guys probably know that because you know I'm not good at numbers, so you guys probably are aware of that. But yeah, it's difficult.
Okay, so we can move on to ethics training. I think, Denny, are you due?
I shouldn't be due, but I took it again, and I've set my, set my, I put my thing into Eloise's box.
Okay.
Okay, could you check, Leanne, with Eloise and see if she has a copy of his?
Sure.
And Pat, did you get yours done?
Pat's all set.
Okay.
Pat, a month ago.
Yeah.
So we're up to date then, if you get Denny's, right?
I think so. I don't have my list. My list is at the office, but I believe that.
There it is.
There's his.
Well, you just need to scan it and send it to her.
I brought it up and left it there.
Oh, okay.
All right, I will check with Eloise and see if we're, we're all up to.
Okay, approval of minutes.
I moved that we approved the minutes of the April, April 8th meeting as written.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call vote. Let's see, Jim?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And I'm an I, so. We've approved the minutes. We have nothing else outstanding in the way of minutes, do we?
We do not.
Do we have any warrant issues?
Um, you did want to have Denny report in regards to the reserve fund transfer for my wages for the remainder of FY '20.
I have heard nothing from anybody.
Well, I did hear something. One of the things that we had done is about 18 months ago, asked the, the then building inspector was reluctant to add to Leanne's wages, so we asked the finance committee for some part-time wages. And it seems as though the powers that be would like to roll those into the inspectors. I have no objection as long as they understand it's, you know, that we are donating that pool of money. And originally, Leanne was supposed to be the land use clerk for all of the inspectors and all of the land use boards. So she has a lot of work to do. She seems to think she could handle the ZBA and the inspectors, and it can come out of Rich's budget, so they're going to transfer our money into there. You having to do it, Denny?
No, hang on one second, I'll. I don't believe we have much left.
Well, that's what the reserve fund transfer was. We filled out the paperwork to take $650 from my current wage line item in the building department and transfer it into ZBA to finish paying me for the remainder of this fiscal year.
Right, but next year, it's going to all.
It'll all be in that one line item.
We only have 7847 left in wages for Leanne. So we'll have to spend that at some point in time or combine it with some of the reserve fund transfer.
Leanne, can you submit something that will eat up the majority of that?
Well, yeah, when I put in for my payroll for May and June, that will eat that up, and then whatever is needed from the reserve fund transfer.
Excellent.
Are they going to reserve fund transfer to the ZBA or to the land board?
To the ZBA. They're going to take it from my, the wage line item in the building department and transfer it into the ZBA wage line item just for the remainder of this fiscal year.
Okay.
So, and so I'll have two more payrolls for May and for June. So with the 7847 and the reserve fund transfer of 650, that more than enough will cover those two months.
Wonderful.
Oh, never say that, Leanne, because then we'll get bombed. But next year, we won't be doing this. It'll all come out of the inspector.
Right, and you know what? It's, well, that's beside the point. Never mind. Yeah.
That's the way it should be.
Yeah, and there were hours in my, there were hours in the building department that would have allowed for the ZBA. The previous building inspector felt that I would need them all for the building department, and I did not.
Well, sometime we'll have to have a talk with Rich too, because I'm not sure that he.
Yeah, he and I are on the same page.
Okay, so as long as you've worked it out with him, we're all set.
We are.
Okay, one other thing about budget. We had gotten $600 last year for expenses, even though we didn't expend but less than $100. They have put $500 in next year's budget, and to be honest with you, I was pleased with that. We usually expend a hunk of that going to the Citizen Planner's Training Collaborative. So I was appreciative that they, in the fact that they're looking for money and that we didn't spend it this year, I did explain that it was the reason why we didn't use it. But I think that's important for us to have the ability to go to. Okay, is everybody available for our next meeting in June?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
We all know when it is.
June 10th.
So that's, yeah.
And do we want dark time of 6:30?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll let you know if, in the meantime, we get a petitioner to come in. The only one that I think will take any action on is if we receive the building inspectors. I'm so glad I asked Amy. I sent her a note and asked her, because I just assumed we could defray that too.
Right.
That's a no-no. So it may well be at the June meeting. And what do we want to do about July? Now, historically, what we have done is go to the third Wednesday in July. I gotta look at a calendar here.
It's, would be the 15th. So the second Wednesday is the 18th, the third Wednesday is the 15th.
So how do folks feel about July?
Doesn't matter.
I'm away the 8th if it matters to anybody.
Where can anybody go?
I'll be on my boat.
You'll be on your boat, and you're not taking us?
Nope, you can't keep social distance on a sailboat.
So you're, you're not going to be here on the 8th?
No, I will be on my boat for that week.
Well, then we're definitely going to the 19th, folks, are we?
15th.
Okay.
15th, good.
Oh, yeah, 15th, okay. And one of the reasons I do that, let's see what happens, but if we don't have to have a meeting, then I would maybe have myself, Leanne, meet and just can, continue stuff. Does that make sense? Although it is kind of fun to get together, and Pat may get her computer fixed.
I think it's fried.
Oh, no.
Well, it's still, it's still circling.
Oh, wow. Okay, does anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss?
No, I am curious how we're going to deal with the letters from Mr. Minnick.
Okay, let me just say that I don't want to say I was sucked into it, but I was sucked into it. That is an earth removal board question.
Yep.
Is it?
As far as I'm concerned.
Wasn't there was a stipulation with his first round of.
Comprehensive permit, yeah.
That we allowed him to take out, I think, no more than 500 yards of material.
Well, this is my most recent, this kind of has put Mary Arata into a tailspin, do you think, Leanne?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because she was trying to look up records and see what, blah, blah, blah. So what I suggested was that they write an email to Mr. Rhodes or, and his attorney and ask him how much material he's removing, where it's destined to go, and under what authority he's doing this. And then based upon the answer, because people were searching the archives, trying to find out, was it authorized over here or at that meeting, or, doesn't matter. It matters how much he's taking out, it matters where it's going, and it matters under what authority he thinks he's doing it. So let him point to the 500 cubic yards or whatever. I remember something similar, Denny, that the first permit was basically said enough to do the cellar holes.
Yes, I remember that too. That would be in the first round of paperwork, right?
Right, but this seems to be something different. It's all at the back of the lot, but I don't feel it's something we need to adjudicate.
Right.
I think it's something that.
I know he went in there right after we approved it, and he raped the land, and there's a great big hole out in the back, and I don't know if he's back in there digging now.
According to this letter, he is. But again, that, I think the selectmen are going to end up being the ones to deal with it, but it is earth removal. Whatever permission we gave him doesn't make any difference. If we said he can remove 500 square yards, then how much is he removing? And where is it going?
Well, I know a bunch of it went down to his property on Dudley Road to finish part of that.
Yeah, green acres.
Green acres. I didn't realize he was back in there mining again.
I don't know that he is. I mean, I just know there was a complaint filed.
Was it filed directly to us, or was it like shotgun to every board in the town?
It was sent to us and somebody else, wasn't it, Leanne?
It was sent to us, and I believe it was also sent to either the town administrator or the board of selectmen. I'm not sure exactly, but.
Right. I mean, we can't police this. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, and I agree. I just feel that he needs a letter sent back saying he needs to contact the selectmen or the earth removal board.
He's been copied on everything. Like, when I received it, I let him know that I had forwarded on to the entire board. When the town. Um, when the town administrator made her response, he was copied on it. So every time there's a response or something, he's copied on it and he's seeing that it's, was sent to the earth removal board and whatever action has ta- been taken.
Okay, so he already knows then, he's just here.
Correct.
Okay.
I think it's here more for the, the hearing to see if the
The last I knew, the last thing I sent to you, Leanne, it was from um the town administrator who asked her administrative assistant to send an email to um Mr. Rhodes requesting um the volume, the location it's being shipped to, and under what authority he's doing this.
Okay.
Did you see that email come?
I didn't, I have not, but that could have come through after I signed off.
You've been a little busy, have you?
It has been very busy, I'm juggling many files. And I've only dropped one so far.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Okay, does anybody have anything else or any questions?
I'm, I'm still curious about the 500 cubic yards. Um, when I looked at this enormous hole, I mean, it is enormous. I'm just curious how, is he responsible for recording every cubic yard he removes? And I don't know, Denny, maybe you could look at it and say, that's more than 500, or maybe it's not 500 cubic yards.
I went in way back when he did mine it. And there was quite a hole there, but it was within, you know, a truckload or two of, of what initially was approved. I don't, like I said, I don't know if he's gone in there to mine it again or not.
Yeah.
If it's what was there, he's, he can't take any more out.
Mm-hmm. But of course, as Lynn said, it's probably not our zebra, not our zoo, as they say.
Well, it may rear its ugly head again when
Yeah.
we start uh the hearing back up, but let's hope at that point um the selectmen or, and the earthworks board, I guess they call them earthworks, is that it?
I think so, yeah.
Um, that they have done their due diligence and gotten answers from him. Um, I don't know, do you know who's on the earthworks board? Didn't, in one of um Mary Arada's notes
Yeah.
I mean, if you, Denny, as an individual, wanted to talk to those folks or to attend the selectmen's meeting if they discuss it and give your opinion as a private citizen, that would be well for you to do.
Madam Chair, um, so we are talking about the South Street site, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so the comprehensive permit that the board granted um did allow for, with, with the comprehensive permit, this board stood in for the earthworks board or for the board of selectmen. And you did grant um earth removal. Um, I remember there was a, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have the permit in front of me, um, but there were certain routes that had to be taken.
And hours of operation.
Yeah, exactly.
And a limit as to how much could be moved.
Correct, so the, the enforcing board is this board. Um, and it's actually the building, the, the building department would actually be the one that would take enforcement on behalf of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Because Mark should have a record of how many trucks he hauled with and how many loads per day they took out of there. And it's pretty cut and dry.
Correct, um, so, so where we are now is where, we're at a, um, at a, at a modification, so he's asking for a modification. So the only things that this board, at this point in the public hearing, which we've continued um, but the only thing that pu- that this board can consider are the modifications. So anything that wasn't modified goes back to the original permit, which was granted on remand, so um I'm assuming he's operating under that original permit, because during this whole um most recent round of the modification, um, earth removal never came up.
Right, which is why I sent it back to the earth removal board, and then if they found a violation, they would go to the building inspector and ask him to give him a cease and desist.
Correct.
And at the time when the permit was originally granted, it was the board of selectmen that was acting as uh the earthworks.
No, this board, this board would have been, would have, under the comprehensive permit, this board was acting as the earth removal
Yeah, but I think we got guidance from the selectmen.
We did, definitely, definitely.
What the parameters would be.
We got numerous correspondence from them, yep.
And um, I think that, you know, they need to know what the volume is, and the only one that can answer that is for someone to go there and view it.
Correct.
Um, what do you guys think? Uh, Amy, did you see that we're a first um with our restaurant?
I did, I did, I did.
Go Berlin.
We are a microcosm of everything that goes up, with first in the country, I can't believe it.
I know, I know, interesting.
I think um some of your folks are working on that too, because they had requested a liquor permit.
Yes, yes, we are, we're on top, we're on top of that.
And um, I'm wondering what's going to happen to that building, because I think they're going to jail.
Well, if, if I can for a second here, if we're gonna go off track here, could we close this meeting out and uh
Sure. Okay, if someone might, would like to make, would you like to leave us? Is that it, Jim?
No, I just, if we're gonna discuss things that aren't really ZBA, I mean, if we want to sit around and chat, that's fine, but we're in a, we're currently in an open public meeting.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I would do that.
Is there a second?
If we adjourn. I second it.
Okay, I'll do a roll call. Um, Pat?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Um, Jim?
Yes.
Um, Denny?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so it's unanimous votes for adjourn.